Welcome to Pints and Politics. I'm your host, Dan Parsons. Welcome to episode number 47. As you know, we have a lot of fun talking with the opinion leaders, thought leaders, and the people that make a difference in our community. And today's no exception. Let me introduce our guests. I'm delighted to introduce two of our Lancaster County Commissioners, Deb Shore, Rick Vest. Welcome to Pints and Politics.
We're excited to be here. It's a first for both of us.
Appreciate you having us, Dan. Thank you.
You do seem excited. Some guests just kind of roll in and it's like, what is this all about? Where is the beer? People ask. So we'll get to that. Well, let me just do a brief introduction. So Deb is currently serving her fifth term.
Fifth term.
As Lancaster County Commissioner, first elected in 2006. Deb represents District Three. Those of you who are following along on your maps, District Three includes southwest Lancaster County, which includes the communities of Hickman, Denton, Firth, Hallam, Panama, Roca, and Sprague.
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay. And I should have run this bio past you, Deb, but I found this somewhere. Proud mother of two. I know that's correct.
Yes.
Married to attorney/husband Mark.
Right. Oh, and new grandmother. You need to get that in there.
And the new grandmother. We should talk about, I think we all share that. We can talk about being grandparents. But you've been married to attorney-husband Mark for 35?
We're getting closer to 40 now. It's like 38. It'll be 38.
Does he know that?
He does. He does. I remind him.
Mark's a great guy, for those of you who know. And this is from your Twitter. So maybe you haven't updated your Twitter. Training for the next half marathon, and you love dogs.
I do love dogs, that's for sure. We have a sheltie by the name of Moka. And I still love running, but right now I'm running for office and not running to train for a half marathon.
That is so good. That's excellent. And a new granddaughter?
A grandson.
Grandson.
And they live in Gretna, so close enough that I get to see little Landon frequently.
That's great. Well, Deb, thank you for being here. And Rick Vest, Commissioner Vest is District Five, if you're following along. And let me describe, yours is much easier, Rick. District Five includes northeast Lincoln, Waverly, and the surrounding rural areas.
Yeah. My friends in Davie are still in the district, so yeah, that sums it up. Havelock, all those northeast neighborhoods.
Because you have deep roots in Havelock, because as I know this, but as I reminded myself, you began your career at Burlington Northern Railroad in 1974.
1974.
You must have been like in high school or...
I was pretty young, Dan.
You had to be.
Yeah.
But a great career at the railroad. You retired in 2015. But you're certified by the state of Nebraska in basic family mediation, which I think is just fascinating. I think that's such a great training ground for being on the county board.
It's a great skill set to have, and it really emphasizes listening to what's being said and making sure that people, what they're saying is recognized, so they know that you understand what they're trying to tell you. It helps foster positive communications and problem solving instead of finger pointing and name calling.
I like that. I like that, Rick. So, and then on the personal side, your wife Dawn and you have, get out your fingers and toes, eight children and 18 grandchildren. Is that a typo?
That, no, but it's outdated because we passed the 18 mark. Together, we have 21 grandchildren that we try to keep up with, whatever they have going on.
Well, there's a full-time job. Your hobbies include traveling, attending sporting events for 21 grandchildren. And I know you're a huge pick-up pickleball.
There you go. That's it. Without pickleball, I don't know if I could possibly make it through a week. So all my friends down at Peterson Park and Speedway, and just get together with them, have a great time. It's a wonderful activity.
That's outstanding. Well, as is our tradition, I think one of the only ways we should be talking about politics is enjoying a Nebraska craft of beer. So we do that here on Pints and Politics. And here's what I've chosen today. I hope this is okay. I've chosen Skinny Legs IPA for those athletes, marathon runner, pickleball player, biker. We're trying to get skinny legs. So this is a light drinking IPA from our friends at White Elm Brewing, right here in Lincoln, Nebraska. So the only thing I'm going to tell you about this, other than that, is the description. It says juicy and aromatic. So juicy and aromatic, skinny legs.
Done this once or twice?
All right. Well, cheers, my friends.
To you, Dan, and to you, Rick.
Deb.
See?
Juicy and aromatic.
Juicy and aromatic. We decided before we came on that Deb and I are kind of IPA fans, Rick, not so much. But this is an easy drinking, right?
Very nice. Great choice.
Yeah. Okay. Well, we will enjoy that. We thank our friends at Wine Elm Brewing. So, well, again, I can't thank you guys enough. There's an election coming up. In fact, there's a primary election coming up on May 10th. And one of you have a primary opponent, the other one does not. So, Rick, your name will not appear on the primary ballot because you don't have a primary opponent.
That's correct. In the May election, I won't be on the ballot, nor will anybody else who is the only candidate within their political party. So there will be a lot of folks who aren't on the primary ballot, but some very much are.
Some get to play a little sooner than others. And so you do have a primary opponent. Your name will be on the primary ballot on May 10th. In fact, tell me, the election will be decided on May 10th?
That's correct. No Democrat had filed for the District Three seat. So this particular race will be decided in the Republican primary coming up here in just 27 days.
Not that you're counting.
Not that I'm counting.
Well, and...
We'll work hard, clear up until probably that Tuesday at noon, I'll still be knocking on the door.
If you see a blur going by, that will be Commissioner Shore on her way.
Yeah, knocking on another door.
Well, and I know how much work it is. I've never been a candidate. I've been behind the scenes for many, many years, as you know, Deb and Rick. And I just want to thank you both for serving and being willing to serve again, because it's a big job.
Well, and one of the things that we really have focused on over the past, I will say four weeks, since the weather's turned a little bit nicer, is door-to-door. And I don't think anything makes as big an impact on voters as actually seeing the candidates show up at your door. I mean, you can do direct mail, and you can do radio, and you can do TV, and like you said, all the social media. But there's something about talking to the voters one-to-one, and that's really has been our focus and will be our focus up until Election Day.
What's a common question you get door-to-door? Why are you here?
Well, no, and this probably won't surprise you, because I'm knocking on doors of Republican voters, is the governor's race. That's what people want to talk about.
Because that's where all the money is being spent.
And a lot of TV ads, and while there is, you know, a gubernatorial candidate on the Democratic ticket, it's really close on the Republican side right now, and who's ahead, and all the numerous TV commercials. So, you know, other than property tax, that's probably the most common question, or even more common, is what are you thinking about the governor's race? It's fun to have that conversation as well.
And Rick, I suspect another common question that people have maybe all the time, what the heck does a county commissioner do?
Yeah, I would not, maybe not the specific area Deb's in, but that's the question I most commonly get. People within the city limits of Lincoln don't realize that they're involved in county commissioners' races because we don't directly govern citizens within the municipalities of Lancaster County. We do impact what's going on in their lives.
Absolutely.
Somewhat indirectly, somewhat directly, but most of them pay more attention to the city council or the mayor or different levels of government.
Deb, how do you answer that question? What does the county board do?
Well, and one of the ways I normally start out this explanation is county government is different than the federal government or state government or city government, where you have like, you know, the president, the governor, or the mayor, and then you have the council, and you have the legislative body. In county government, there's five of us, and we all have to work together with the other eight elected officials, like the county attorney and the public defender and the county clerk and all those other elected offices. So you can have the world's greatest idea, but if you aren't, you know, negotiating or compromising with your fellow county commissioners, your great idea could go down in flames, you know, four to one. And so I think it really is a very collaborative form of government. We serve in both the executive and the legislative branch.
Right, right. Well, and Rick, you mentioned it. We talked about it a minute ago when we talked about your background in mediation and being able to not only have those conversations with your constituents, but as you suggest, Deb, having those conversations and relationships with the other governing entities that you have to deal with.
It really is, as Commissioner Shore has pointed out, it's very unique in that there are five of us. Deb is the current chair. We're very fortunate to have someone with her experience and integrity. She's just been a real, we had a lot of new members. When I came on, Commissioner Flowerday and I came on at the same time, so two brand-new members.
Sorry to interrupt you, but I should mention that I did invite Commissioner Flowerday on the show as well, because he's also up for reelection. And I knew this, but Commissioner Flowerday quickly reminded me, the three of you can't be in a room together.
Well, yeah, that's because our chief administrative officer reminds us on a daily basis.
Right, right. And there's only five of you.
Yeah, state statute governs, you know, how and when we can do business together.
So, yeah, different dynamics.
Because we are sitting here talking about county-related business and that.
And so if Sean was here, that'd be a meeting.
I don't know. If there's beer involved, can it be a meeting? I guess we need more attorneys to examine that question.
Well, so I am interested in, what are some of the issues that are important to you as you contemplate another, the possibility of voters sending you back for another term, Deb?
Do you want to start on this one?
I would be glad to. I mean, yeah. The past, and, you know, Commissioner Shore, Deb, I'll call you whatever you want.
That's good.
But, you know, Deb's seen many different variations of the board during her years of service. This particular group of individuals, three of us were in our first term. Krista came on shortly after Sean and I were elected, replacing Jennifer Brinkman. So we literally had three people that didn't have a full year, a full term of experience working at the same time.
Krista Yocum is your fellow commissioner.
And she's in the northwest. I think that's two, that numbered District Two. So anyway, I'm sure that'll be on the quiz later.
Yeah, she's two, because Roma's four, that's right.
We've made tremendous advancements in a number of areas during the last three budget cycles. Very challenging times, and Deb will add to this, but during the last three budget cycles, we've taken the cash reserve from about 6% of the county budget up to almost 16%, which is very good for our county in a number of ways, Dan, because, one, if there is an emergency, if there was some unexpected event, we now have resources to address that emergency.
That's really good.
And the second part is if federal money becomes available, federal highway projects are done on a cost-sharing basis, where the local entity, i.e. Lancaster County, I think it's 20% or 25%?
It'll vary, but yeah, 80/20 is normal.
Normal. So there you go. So they may cough in $20 million, and that's great free money, but we have to find $4 million somewhere. So now we're poised to take advantage of any big opportunities that might come our way. You know, we're looking at the East Beltway, we're looking at 148 Streets, South 68 Street, which Deb has championed faithfully throughout my time working with her. And we're going to make progress on those, and we have the resources available. So really proud of that. We have put an additional $8.5 million into infrastructure improvements.
We're talking real money.
I mean, in three budget years, with all the challenges we've faced, from record snowfalls to record flooding, to pandemic, to all the problems we face, we've still managed to carve that money out. And we're facing a jail population that just does not decline. We had a dip during COVID for a lot of reasons, but repeatedly, we're seeing our jail grow, our population grow increasingly towards capacity, and that's not healthy for the staff, for the inmates, for their families, for our population.
Let alone the taxpayers.
Let alone the taxpayers. So we are working, and we've got a number of initiatives going on where we're funding nonprofits to help address those needs, because some of these people, you know, it sounds terrible to say somebody's been arrested 18 times, but the 18 charges are, what's the noise?
Trespassing or...
Disturbing the peace.
They're not felonies.
No, they're just people that are just not quite balanced, that need a place to land where they can pull themselves together. And then they're not in the courts, they're not in the jail. They're somewhere more productive for everybody, so.
Having worked in the Attorney General's office in another lifetime, I'm very sensitive to the whole criminal justice challenge that you guys face on a regular basis. So in addition to some of those issues, Deb, there is some money available to you from the federal government, right?
Right. And, you know, your question was, what are you looking forward to or expecting in the next several years? And that's one of the things that excited me about running for office again after so many years. The fact that as a result of the American Recovery Plan Act, ARPA as we call it, Lancaster County received $62 million in our allocation.
Just for the county?
Just for the county. And then the city received $43 million. So we've partnered with the city as part of our planning process, so we're not duplicating efforts. But, you know, you think about over $100 million, what a wonderful opportunity to make generational change, you know, in Lincoln.
Literally once in a lifetime.
Yes, in Lincoln and Lancaster County. And, you know, I feel that my knowledge and my expertise gained over the years will be helpful in making those decisions.
So some of those dollars have been allocated, but there's still yet more to be allocated.
Right. We kind of have kind of, I would say, a draft plan, you know, certain kind of areas we want to focus on. And some of those contracts have been signed, meaning that we have definite plans in place. And some of it is just a little bit more kind of in the preliminary stages. I'll give you an example.
Yeah, please.
Broadband, one of the things that was really highlighted as part of the pandemic and the whole work from home, school from home, all of that type of unsettledness, was the fact that a lot of our more rural constituents in Lancaster County didn't have quality, high-speed internet. And it made that challenging.
I find that fascinating. I've been involved a little bit in the broadband on the state level. And, yeah, people right here in Lancaster County, we're not talking Cherry County, or actually Cherry County is probably one of the better counties, but we're not talking
Kiapaha.
Kiapaha or Box Butte or something in rural, very rural Nebraska. We're talking 40, 30 miles outside of Lincoln, there's people that can't dial up their Netflix, let alone work from home.
Yeah. So the rules and regulations, anytime you're working with federal dollars, there's a lot of those. And so one of the allowable uses was to expand broadband access. And that really, I think, jumped out as an early priority for the board, because we all have, not only Lincoln City constituencies, but rural constituencies. So we have issued an RFP to get a consultant to work with us to make smart decisions regarding that part of, you know, kind of our ARPA package. And, you know, we've allocated some additional funds for public health. We're doing a expanded covert replacement project.
We supported the airport.
The airport. Oh, good one. That's a good one.
Yep. We've had the airport, we've had Dave and his crew on the podcast before. And actually Parsons has done some work for the airport. Yeah, those dollars that we can get so that we can attract more service to Lincoln is, again, not only for the county, but for the city to continue to grow this city and county.
And a significant increase in funding for our human service providers in this community. Another thing that was highlighted by the pandemic was, you know, domestic abuse, food insecurity, mental health issues. And so providing additional funding to those entities so they can increase their capacity to serve more people in need.
One of the other areas that I know you deal with on a continual basis, and you mentioned it earlier, is just roadways. Pam Dingman, our beloved county engineer, is always talking about more, I need more funds, because this bridge is, this road needs work. And so the constant need for that, just, this isn't sexy stuff, right? This isn't, this is just the infrastructure needs of a growing metropolis and a growing county. So, Rick, talk about that a little bit. What are the needs and solutions for some of those things? Other than just money?
Yeah. It's a great topic, actually, and a lot of facets to it, Dan, in that we repeatedly hear, this is a WPA bridge, or this is a bridge that was put in with federal funding.
WPA back in World War II.
Yeah, yeah, '30s even sometimes. And so what we've seen, there was this influx of federal funds that helped build the infrastructure when it was began. And Lancaster County is a very large county geographically and has an enormous traffic flow on a lot of our roads. So the problem's somewhat multifactorial in that federal funds helped develop it, then federal funds were withdrawn. And then, one thing, the board, we only have limited tools, as everyone needs to be aware of. County government is a subset of state government. Our responsibilities are defined by the state government. The tools we have to fulfill those responsibilities are also defined by state government. We don't have a mandate to create our own taxing system. We operate under those. So what we have are property tax dollars. When you hear things about property tax relief, that's all fine and good, as long as certain legislative initiatives don't dump more responsibility on county government.
The unfunded mandates.
They're...
There you go.
You worked that in very gracefully. Thank you.
That's why I'm the host of this thing.
I was hoping you'd...
You've done your homework. Yes.
Yeah. And we, a big topic. We could spend the rest of the time on unfunded mandates. But back to the infrastructure. So the problem has been created by the fact that federal funding was withdrawn, leaving the responsibility on local property tax owners. There's not enough property tax dollars in Lancaster County to address all the needs. But we have done several things to move in the right direction. During our last three budgets, we have modernized the fleet of the engineering department. We have purchased, I would say, about a dozen new trucks. We had an aging fleet that was high on maintenance and breakdowns, delayed efficiencies and maintenance. So we've resolved that. We've added two excavators. We just approved the second one. What we're being told by the engineering folks is that that allows them to do the work themselves. Instead of hiring contractors, we do it much more efficiently and much more cost-effectively. So we're moving in the right direction. We're reaching an agreement with the city of Lincoln on MPO funding, Metropolitan Planning Organization, which again is federal dollars. The recognition that some of the county problems are caused by the expansion of the city of Lincoln. Drive out in east of 84th Street and see the county roads that are still gravel and rock.
Right.
And look who's driving. I'm 400-plus. We know it's well over 400.
Right.
And so it just overwhelmed. At 400 cars a day, gravel roads cannot be maintained. It's just not possible. No matter how determined our county engineering folks are, it's just an overmatch for the road. So we have reached a really good agreement with them, whereby they're recognizing that the responsibility on these roads is a shared responsibility, and we're putting increased MPO funding into those roads right next to the thing.
That fringe development.
So, you know, one of the things I think is fascinating for folks that maybe don't follow county government is just the relationship you guys have amongst yourselves. There's only five of you. What's that like?
You know, my favorite way to explain it is like when you get a new in-law that comes into the family. You don't pick them, they just start showing up at, you know, all the, at dinner. And same thing after Election Day. You know, you don't get to pick your coworkers, they just show up. And right now, you know, we've got, you know, three Democrats and two Republicans, and three women and two men.
And please name them, Deb, again, to remind our listeners who your colleagues are.
Oh, okay. The vice chair this year is Krista Yocum. Sean Flowerday represents kind of the core of Lincoln, and Roma Amundsen kind of has the southern-east part of Lincoln and Lancaster County. So, like I said, it's, we're urban, we're rural, we're male, we're female, we're, you know, Republican, Democrat, well, some young, some old.
I saw you look at me, Deb. I got...
No, no, no. You and I, well, Sean Flowerday is our youngest member. But, you know, the point is, we just all come together and we work well as a group. And very few of our issues are broken down by any of those ideologies, but it's that willingness to come together and negotiate and compromise to make the best decisions we can for, you know, for our residents.
That's good leadership. And, Rick, because you guys spend a lot of time together.
You know, it's a funny, it's a great point, Dan, and I appreciate you asking, because, you know, we are together every Tuesday and Thursday, 50 weeks a year. And, you know, it's easy to look forward to going in. We've done a number of things that have made it work. And the biggest thing we did was, there were points, new people on the board, new initiatives, new priorities. There were, I can identify three points where the board could have fractured. But at all three points, people had the courage to have difficult conversations, face-to-face. What are you thinking? Why are you doing this? What's going on? And those conversations led to strength in relationships, healthy ability to disagree and yet maintain our focus on problem solving. A lot of tribute to the leadership on the board. And we have hired the best staff in the country.
Yes, yeah.
In the country.
Again, those are things that the public doesn't see.
Doesn't see.
And, but I can attest, I've spent a few hours in meetings before you for clients, and I can attest, you both, all five of you, have done exactly what you described, Rick. You've been leaders, and that's where it really comes down to. So I want to thank you both. Let me wrap up by just thanking some of our people that make this happen. The crew at BCOM Solutions, Courtney, Caitlin is here with us, and Rachel. Their team do all of the... Their team do all of the production, editing, and distribution of this podcast. Kim Remington, operations manager at Parsons Public Relations. The Pints in Politics theme music is written and performed by Jack Rodenberg. A very well-known name in the community. Fuse Co-Working, our home at Parsons Public Relations, located in the heart of the Haymarket here. And our guests, Commissioner Deb Shore, Commissioner Rick Vest.
Can we, just as we close, if they want to know more information about my race for county commissioner for reelection, they just need to go to debshore.com, D-E-B-S-H-O-R-R dot com.
Wonderful. And we will put those in the notes to make sure that people can find you. And Rick, the same with you. We will make sure.
Votevest.com.
Perfect.
All right.
Friends, cheers.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dan. Well done.